I'm a bit terrible. That's why I said I don't want to say that. Yes, I don't know. You know, she said you'd be on every day. I do too. So I tried to go back. I was trying to get ready.
We are back. It is seven P M. I will go ahead and call this meeting. We can start with a moment of silence, please. We're gonna stand for the title of the meeting. I tried that weekend. Just there's a reminder, if you have a cell phone with you, please make sure that it's turned off or out of silence. Members, please make sure that it's off your desktop. See if that's going to go. They'll take roll call for us, please.
Councilmember Williams. Reed. Jackson here. Lawler. Davis.
Consent.
Friends.
Here.
And there's.
Here. I would like to make a motion to approve of the agenda with an adjustment of moving item B to the consent calendar. Do you have a support?
Support. So you don't move on C or D?
D.
D, that's what I thought.
I'll say aye.
Aye.
Pose. So this evening, we are gonna start off with a brief introduction, one of our newest police officers and local resident, San Antonio Bright Mitchell. San Antonio joined the force. And I'm gonna turn more over to Chief.
Well, San Antonio spent a little time for almost eight years. I just don't remember. So he's a new up. He's getting one way, but he finally got straight through this campaign and then May twenty fourth, he was sworn in by and started still raining. And so we're excited to ask him here, former resident of the county. I'm over right.
San Antonio, if you would like to say a few words.
Um. Um, which I really as long as I'm public, online or on every street. So
All right, well, we are very appreciative that you decided to take that step to join our police force to work with our community. We have every confidence that you are gonna make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, consent calendar item. Well, I'm sorry. Look on it. Yep. Um, if there's anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and address council in regards to an agenda item, you have opportunity to do so in three minutes is yours. Would like to state your name and address.
Well, my name's Alan Hudson. I live at eleven hundred South Darrell Street here in town. I'm also a community pastor at the Albion Reclamation Church and Community Center, which is up on Maple Street. If look at item D on your agenda. I'm here to talk a little bit about that. It's the hound dog cook-off and no, we're not cooking dogs. But we been planning on trying to get something for that part of town. Because it seems like everything's on this side of town. So we want to do it. We've been planning stages. Uh, we're gonna do a rib cook-off. We've got three judges lined up. Two of them, one of them said, great, he'd love to. So we're still working on getting them. We're gonna have food trucks, a car show. We're gonna have activities for kids, maybe face painting, something like that. We're gonna try and get some tractors come in for the kids. And the big thing, well, it's called, it's called the hound dog cook-off. We've got the number one Elvis impersonator coming in that night for a concert at the church. The tickets are free. But you have to see us to get the free tickets. But it's something we've been planning on and it's something we are hoping that we can continue if we get a good showing. Other than that, any questions? I know it sounds weird. Oh, we might even have peanut butter and banana sandwiches grilled.
Probably right.
They're tasting good, all right.
Do we have any questions for Pastor Hudson? All right, thank you. Anybody else like to stand and address counsel? All right, on to our consent calendar items. In our packet, we have the minutes for our May fifteenth study session, the May fifteenth regular council session. We have also part of our consent calendar, the assembly permit for Juneteenth at Holland Park and the park reservation for Felicia Coats. Along with our item D now. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Support. Um, favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Next. Do I have a motion to approve adding the delinquent miscellaneous receivables to the twenty twenty-three summer tax bills?
So move.
Support. City Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is a yearly process. So our finance office, they are working to prepare the twenty twenty-three summer tax bills. So all the delinquent miscellaneous receivables, that could be abatements, um, other invoices that the city may issue to residents or businesses if they've not been paid. They are added to the twenty twenty-three summer tax bills. List is included in the packet and we are recommending approval so we can get already taxes prepared and sent out.
Any questions for City Manager Snyder? City clerk.
Councilmember Reed. Jackson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Friends.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
And there's.
Yeah. They have a motion to approve adding the delinquent utility bills to the twenty-three summer tax.
So move.
Support. For the manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So similar to the outstanding miscellaneous receivables, we do the same with delinquent water bills. Um, a list is included in the packet, but we are recommending that they are added to the twenty twenty-three summer tax bills.
Any questions for City Manager Snyder? So when it comes to the delinquent water bills. I know that people get shut off noted. You shut offs not happen?
They do. Some of their inactive towns. So it would make them inactive.
So basically that there is a business in town that owes like seventeen thousand dollars. Just wondering if that's ever been a consideration?
But they're off because there's one that is active, but the water is off.
Thinking about that. No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, are funds available, are senior services available for people who may not have uh, financial resources to pay this? What are their options?
Um, for seniors, they can always reach out to the Calum County Senior Services Office and then also if you qualify the M D H H S O, Michigan Department Health and Human Services, you, if you qualify, you may be eligible to receive assistance that way as well.
Any other questions?
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Friends.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Reed, yes, and Mayor Snyder.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve a three-year lease for E D P S to get a twenty twenty-two Chevy Silverado?
So move.
Support.
Uh, this is for a replacement lease for the vehicle that we need to turn back in because we've already had it for three years for uh, Detective Lieutenant Wagen. Um, the vehicle's paid for by the I R S. Um, because she's the task force officer with the I R S. Um, and so she can use that for uh, the work that she does with the I R S and also for any work that she does for public safety.
Do we have any questions for Chief?
Nope.
City clerk coming up.
Also member David.
Yes.
Friends.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Reed. Jackson.
Yes.
And there's.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the application to close Maple Street from North Street to Broadwell Street?
So move.
Support.
We moved.
Across the Nancy.
I moved it, yeah, just.
I still have that tab. I didn't move my tab. My apologies. Um. I have a motion to approve the board application for Mary Slater to the Arts Commission.
So move.
Support. Um, so in your package, you have her applications. Um, we discussed that currently there are no members on this committee, but she said that she would work very diligently to get others to tie to hopefully have a robust committee. Do we have any questions? City clerk coming up.
Councilmember Friends.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler. Or sorry, Davis.
Yes.
And there's.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the application for Scott Coverley?
So move.
You can support. Mr. Coverley is here with us this evening. Um, so Scott, if you wanted to come up and say a few words. You have the opportunity to do so.
Sure. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I look forward to working with the existing members of A D C and Ms. Ammerman uh, to support the economic initiatives of.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Cover? And Scott, you're currently the director?
Correct. I'm currently the director of the Eastern Academic Center and the Liaison for Business and Industry Partnerships for Keller Community College.
That's why we thought it would be a good fit for him to sit on the board. All right.
Also member Williams.
Yes.
Reed, yes. Jackson.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Friends.
Yeah.
And there's.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of grills and trash receptacles for Barnes Park?
So move.
Support.
City Manager Snyder?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So included, we're looking to, in your packet are a couple of grill models and trash cans. So we're looking to add them or replace the ones that are currently in Barnes Park. Um. We're looking to get seven grill pits and three trash cans for a total of one thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. The reason it's coming before you is because this was not a budgeted expense for this year. So we are just asking that you approve um, so that we can get these ordered and added to the park space. This will go along the local American Legion. They are in the process of redoing the picnic table. So we're trying to revitalize that park space until we can really um, get new um, equipment down there. Uh, we're working to amend our current Parks and Recreation Master Plan to tie that project in. So if you have projects included in that master plan, it opens up to grant funding. And so this is something that we can do show to show that park space a little love in the meantime. So we will be covering this expense out of our Calum County Parks Milage. I mean, we are recommending approval.
Do we have any questions for City Manager? City clerk coming up.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Friends.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
And there's.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the section three policy revisions?
So move.
Support. City Manager Snyder?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the minor revisions to our current section three policy, we're required to have this policy in place um, for certain grant funding that we receive. Um, if you look through the policy right now, it references twenty-four C R part one thirty-five. This revision changes it to part seventy-five. Um, and that just uh, for reporting, um, instead of reporting how many new hires were created as part of the federally funded project, we now just have to report on the number of hours worked by section three employees. So we are looking to revise our current policy so that we can move forward with our current rent C D B G rental rehabilitation project.
Any question for City Manager?
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
And this.
Yes.
Friends.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Reed, yes. And there's.
Yes. Next is our discussion on the cross connection control program. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Jackson has asked to have this brought up in the packets. There's information for our ordinance. Um, I will turn this over to City Manager to get some more insight.
Yeah, so the cross connection program, it's mandated by the state of Michigan um, in accordance with part fourteen of the Michigan Safe Drinking Water Act. So anytime there are cross connections, they have to be inspected um, to make sure that there is not any backflow getting into the city's water distribution system. Um, we contract through HydroCorp um, to administer our program. Um, they are not local, but unfortunately, there are no local providers that have the certification or the requirements to conduct these inspections. Um, some municipalities, they complete the work or administer the program in in-house. Um, and others, they contract it out like we do. Um, when talking to our superintendent of Public Utilities, he said if it's something that we want to start doing um, in-house, we would have to, there's training that we could send our crew members to to get the necessarily necessary license or requirements to to complete that. Um, but it's pretty much it spelled out, it's a requirement for ordinance. Um, it was adopted in two thousand five and officially adopted the part. That's where we officially adopted the part fourteen rules.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Jackson.
So um, I guess the resident, was she really had a problem was when she did call HydroCorp and asked them who could help with this matter? Um, they said that they could not suggest a certain person or whatever, and she wasn't asking for that. She was just asking, can you give me a list of who I can call or to come and and do this or take care of it? So then, in the meantime, she calls one of our plumbers to see if they can come and give her some information about it. But in the same time, they had to be recertified and it cost them like eight hundred dollars to recertify. So there were some of them that had not been recertified. And then on top of that, then she just continues to be just a lot, her trying to get someone to come out and take care of this because she had a due date of May thirty-first, basically. And so she doesn't want to find or whatever could, you know, take place. So what she's asking is that she doesn't want to make a moho, a moho out of a big old heel. Is that if we're gonna have certain requirements of this um, for our residents, can you give them a lease, a list of who they can contact to help them get this taken care of? And so this is what she's asking.
So basically, this is for all residents and businesses who have automatic sprinkler systems?
There are other, I don't know what all fall under the cross connection, but yes, that is one of them. Any line that um, could possibly um, cause backflow for our water distribution system, they are responsible for having this um, inspection completed to make sure that that is, that's not a threat.
And that inspection, the number that was in that letter, I sorry, it had before me, I must have dropped it way out. Or that dollar amount of fifteen hundred dollars or whatever that was at that time. When she talked to somebody about it, that is a lot of money. So if we could do some type of due diligence and helping her get someone to um, come out and look at this so that she can get this taken care of, that's basically it's not help. And it's not like she had um, came to not paying, but actually email the city about this before talking to me and she really wasn't getting what she needed. So I said, okay, let's put this on the agenda and let's get this kind of settled before so they can all look at it on YouTube because I'm quite sure there's more than just her down, you know, Urban Avenue that has this and then finally out in the other areas that have these nice beautiful homes or even some that just want their lawn to be beautiful. So we could get this um, established and give them some more information to send it out so that they can find.
Well, we would have to, I could have either Director O'Brien or Superintendent Heston reach out because we have a new agreement in place with HydroCorp. So they administer this program for us. So we're not the ones scheduling. That's where they uh, contact HydroCorp. So we can have a follow-up conversation with them to see if they have are able to provide a list of vendors to to our residents or businesses that call in for testing.
Okay, so then when you guys do that, just let them know that they're not asking them like, who's the best person? All they're asking is, can you give me a list of individuals so I can call? And that's how they get their information back to her. That's how it came to be so obvious. It says, yeah.
So if I understand it, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Jackson's uh, conversation. What we're contracting is a company to do inspections, not remediation of problems. Is that correct? And so then what we're asking then, are there services, local or otherwise, who could then follow the inspector and say, okay, we're gonna be the one that's gonna come through and and be one of two, which would be companies that residents who fail inspection and turn to to find a fix. Cost-wise, that's the residents. That's the question, right? So I don't think the residents worried about the price. They're just looking for a company that will do it. And it all it is is whether or not they have a backflow preventer right on their, on their lawn sprinkler system, right? That doesn't require certification of it.
I don't know to the degree what the inspection, what they look for, but yes, if you receive one of these letters, you're required to have someone come out to inspect it to make sure that
Yeah.
devices installed.
Director O'Brien, is this on your radar?
Yes, I pointed out a whole complaint following you about this. Maybe going to the same issue uh, with local providers, the local area to help develop. Um, I'm guessing I can contract for Eagle for listed providers to find out who can't.
When.
Currently, I do not know.
Yeah, when I talked to Superintendent Heston, he said Triangle Plumbing, they used to hold the certification, so they were the local. Unfortunately, they no longer have that. So I can't remember how much he said for them to recertify. Um. But right now, we do not have any local companies who are able to conduct the inspection. So we can reach out to HydroCorp or Eagle to see if we can get a list in the surrounding area to provide to residents if they need.
She called two of our local people.
Yeah. Kevin must have lost somebody in her team that used to do that. But just since.
And so we passed that date.
Yeah, right. So, yeah. So you'll alert code enforcement to not like start finding people because they can't find a contract.
Yeah.
That's the concern.
All right. So are we good on this topic?
Yes, we are.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention. I hadn't even thought of that. That wasn't do the work. It seems crazy to me.
Next is our discussion on the process for conserving and renting park space. City Manager Snyder, do you want to give us a simple order? Make a quick jump Jackson.
Yeah, do you want to add anything? And then I'm happy to jump in.
Okay, I like that. So then you'll clarify some things. So I know we do have a P schedule here. But I think we need to make it known to our residents even more, say, we've done this. Um, it's already laid out. But just through some conversations of being in the park and hearing some of them talk, they feel that some areas are um, maybe first come, first served, and we know that's not so. So we need to continue to let them know that they do have to fill out a paper to be able to rent those pavilions, even in the new area. Because a lot of them are anticipating on happy birthday parties and all those different things, but they need to um, come down here and fill out the proper paperwork, the permit so that they can use the park. That was one concern. The other concern was, I know I did talk to Kip and I did speak to also um, Haley about the uh, cameras being in the park. When you're out there and take kids out there in the park and you actually sit there and you're not there for an hour, but you're there for a couple of hours. There are many um, arguments, many things that are going on in the park that shouldn't be as well. And I know one of my concerns was that in McIntosh Park now with having that water park, we as, maybe I need to bring this also down to the uh, the park advisory. Is that they're taking containers after they get done with their pump, after they get done with their water bottles, they're actually filling them up and they're throwing on kids and throwing it on people. And kids are not liking that. Um, adults are not liking that. And so I thought, well, there was just me until I seen someone's post. And someone's post, they actually had tears come out there. I saying, can you guys help come out here and and do some more surveillance or, you know, keep this area under control. So there's a lot going out there that we don't need. So there's a lot going out there that we don't even know. And I know maybe we don't want to pay for anybody out there, but we're gonna have to do something to make sure that um the people out there are being safe as well. And I I mean, I got into it with someone with not trying to be mean or anything. I did apologize to them, but one of the kids were being, they were actually squirting that water gun to an adult's face. That's what was going. And I just asked them to move it over. Um, and I guess as they wasn't kind of listening, my voice raised, but not howling to chat. So I did apologize for you know, if she thought that's what I was doing. But I was saying that is going on on adults. Because you have those two tables out there now in that area. So if anybody will sit underneath those tables, they're gonna get wet. I hope, I'm quite sure maybe that was that's for. And then also a little baby was out there and it was literally just, they were just actually just spraying water on that baby's face and, you know, so and then that's a lot of this going on. So and I know this is parents that has to take care of this and I understand you guys. But I think there's somewhere that we can help as well, and that is going back and saying into our um into uh our um rules about out there that you can't use the bottles, you can't use this and that or whatever, but.
Counselor.
A follow-up to that, uh Mayor Pro Tim Jackson is public safety is aware when we rent out a pavilion, right? Whenever park it is, right?
Public services?
Yes, no, public safety. So if we're talking about trying to protect people in parks, if it's rented and we have issues of arguments or fights or bad language, do we can we connect the park rental with our public safety so they can at least make an additional patrol during the hours that they're there? Not to necessarily get out of their patrol car necessarily, or maybe to engage with citizens in a positive way so that behavior is is sort of modulated, if you will.
Yeah, I don't want to speak for Chief Kip, so I would let him weigh on in on his department operations, but just to add.
I say something for you. Say what you're gonna say. Then you continue. I'm I'm asking at the same token that we have some type of slot at each park where that paper is sliding.
Oh signage.
Signage. It's already been signed up. People need to know that as well.
Yeah.
You know, so the police come up there wanting, they're gonna call us and they being harassed, but they're not being harassed.
Right.
So that information is supposed to go out at every park. It used to. But it used to just put tape up there and put it out there. But I'm saying we might need something more to slip it in there and let them know this is I'm not available because it is paid for.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yes, um, so first to start, um, we do have a park reservation fee. Um, so we have five pavilions in our park spaces. If you are looking to hold a public gathering or a birthday party, a family reunion, um, a picnic with a large group or just a a group of people, you are required to reserve the pavilion space. If you're just visiting one of our parks and you pack lunch and you just want to take the time to eat your meal and go back to playing, you do not need to reserve it. Obviously, you need to be respectful to the people who have paid the reserve, the fee to reserve that space. We ask that you contact Bonnie Admins or you stop in to the D P W office. You can get the park reservation form offline or come down here at City Hall. Um, but you fill that out. There is a fee. We, um, City Council, you all amended our fee schedule to there's three tiers. So there's a fee for residents, non-residents, and the nonprofit organization. So everybody should be paying this fee to utilize, to utilize the space. Those fees um go towards maintenance and cover um wages for our Parks Department to service our parks. So it's important that everybody is doing their part to follow the process and to reserve the space. We also ask if you are reserving um a park pavilion to do it in advance. So then our crew knows um what events we have coming up to make sure that the the pavilion or the space is properly cleaned, prepped and ready so that you could have a good a good event. Um, I think it's I've seen advertisements for things on Facebook and we follow up that they have not reserved the park. And then it comes an issue where a family may have paid the fee and then they show up and it's like where then that creates a bigger issue. So we um encouraging everybody, please follow the process, kind of reserve the pavilion space, or you can even rent out the full park. If you're holding like a large scale of it, there is a fee um to reserve the park space. Again, these fees go towards covering the cost of the maintenance and upkeep and pay for our our parks employees. In terms of the splash pad, um, the two racket ship sprayers, um unfortunately, they were damaged, so they are not supposed to rotate all the way around. I think people are a little excited that we have it. And we have reached out to Pantra. They are the manufacturer who designed the splash pad. They've already ordered the parts to have it replaced. Um, I was uh victim of one of those sprayers too. So yes, you will get hit and you're hitting or sitting at um, the the tables right by the park space. So that is in the process of being repaired so that um, parents or people observing will not get sprayed with water. Um, I also have witnessed from being in that park space, we have to, yes, we updated our park rules and we're ordering the signs to give them added out. Parts, our parks are open from uh they're closed from between dusk and dawn. So you should not be in the park when it's dark out or getting dark. We close when the sun starts to go down. But we also have to require on our parents and guardians who are bringing children out to the park space to do their part to make sure that your kids are properly playing with each other, that we're not hitting and and uh standing on pavilion tables. And um just not treating our our park spaces like you should. Um, I really encourage the guardians and stuff to to watch over your children when you bring them to to our park space. It's not I don't want to say it's not the city's responsibility to police the children. We were making sure that we're providing a safe place for families to gather. So we want to make sure that that our residents are doing their part to um also clean up after yourself. Um, when you come out, just make sure that you're not leaving, that we have trash cans there. You're not throwing your trash on the ground. And that just helps to do your part in in making sure that we have these nice spaces for for our residents and visitors to come and it makes you just take pride in our community. Um, but so I have noticed that and I I think people may be excited. It's new. Um, I've witnessed young, it pre-teens are the ones I've seen having fun with the water bottles dumping it on each other's heads. And maybe we can discuss at the recreation advice if we want to amend those park rules to add some some rules specific to to the splash pad area. Um, but the biggest thing is make sure you're following the process to reserve, to reserve those park spaces so that we can make sure that they are cleaned and they are prepped and ready to go. And we're not having issues with people who who have done what they're supposed to do to reserve them.
Just one more bit of information that I read. Of course, social media is how we three of all things. And there was a a comment that was made that was not positive uh regarding the splash pad and um maybe there should be a warning sign as well because I guess this grandparent took the child to the splash pad and undoubtedly the child was running around on the hot cement and received burns on her feet uh from the hot cement. That is something that of course we should know better, you know, as adults, you know, if a child is playing on the splash pad in ninety-degree weather, the cement is going to be hot, whether it's in Albion or whether it's in New York, the cement is going to be hot. But that was just a negative comment that maybe something can be added, you know, be mindful of or maybe an advisory to wear a water shoes or something like that because it was no fault of the park. You know, it was just a parental responsibility to protect the child from um from the sun damage, you know, or the pavement. But I um maybe what uh council member uh Jackson said regarding if there is an area where rental approvals have been uh made, and if I'm renting the pavilion or something and I can prove that I'm renting the pavilion, there's no discussion, you know, in terms of someone else wanting to come use it. So if there's a slot or some kind of posting that can guarantee or verify that the space is being rented, when, you know, what time, by whom even. At least that may cut down some of the discussion or disagreement or something.
Look at a possible digital calendar maybe, but I know Bonnie, she has a calendar that she keeps track of all of the reservations.
Right.
Um, they are, they get a copy once they're paid with the receipt so that they have that for their record, but we can look at creating something.
You know, something that maybe they can put in the slot, or maybe they can put like a mailbox or some kind of signage that says this park is being rented at this time.
Or or if you could post it on a Facebook page, then people can pull it up on their phones.
Right, some kind of verification other than their word of mouth. Because seems like that we're, that's where the disagreement is.
And that has been done in the past because we used to rent it every year for different things and it would be posted.
Something was posted.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Something should be posted to verify.
So a lot of some of the challenges that we are discussing, I have seen positives um come out of, you know, the new park and splash pad. I've seen local residents um take ownership of the area and are not afraid to say something when they see kids or anyone else being really like with this on items. Um, but as well, people go out early to clean, pick up, to make sure things are safe for the kids. So that truly is bringing our community together um in wanting to keep a nice space nice. So I've been able to witness some positives have come out and so um that's a good thing as well. So I do wanna just say appreciation to those that are looking after, not only uh McIntosh Park, but Victory Park, Holland Park. Now there's folks that kind of have ownership of certain areas based on where the residents are. Um, so as mayor, I appreciate that.
Maybe that can be put in writing and still on our page.
Any other comments in regards to this discussion item?
We are just, I know that um council, you all weren't made aware of the incident that we had regarding the small child at Victory Park. Um, so we have, our parks crew have gone out, we prepared that. Unfortunately, that it it's at, I would say, the end of life, but we've had that structure for over twenty years. When you look, it's
Just about.
Almost, yep. It was designed to last about twenty years. So I think we've gotten our good use out of it. Fortunately, Victory Park, it's experienced high levels of vandalism. The wood posts, the fencing have been repeatedly kicked out. Um, but our parks crew, they did go out and create um perform an extensive repair. So to keep that from happening, um, we are eligible for, there's another round of spark grant funding coming out. Um, so we've talked about possibly looking to revitalize Victory Park. Um, cause with that large wooden structure, like I said, it's at its end of life and just to prevent any future accidents, we are looking to hopefully revitalize that space as well. So more information will come regarding that.
That can be one of our short-term goals.
Anything else? Right. Future agenda items, anything council members would like to see at upcoming meeting?
I'm not sure if it'll be your next meeting or the meeting after that, but um the college is seeking to rezone several parcels of property, like nine parcels of property that kind of fit between the railroad tracks, Erie Street, Huron Street and Porter Street. Um, so there'll be a public hearing and a first reading for you at at one of your, either your next meeting or the meeting after that, um planning commissioner, your group.
Speaking of the college, we as a council want to invite our Albee College's new president to a council meeting in July. He officially starts July one, but I know he's in town next week, but yeah. Us being proactive rather than waiting for him to say, hey, congratulations. We'd love to have you come to a council meeting, introduce yourself to the city.
Any other future agenda items? Yep, Mayor Pro Tim Jackson.
Yes, I'd like to talk about um cameras being put up in certain areas.
Security cameras, security cam.
Little parts at the parks.
He said that one is going up in the parks, you put parks in certain areas.
One's easier than the other.
Exactly. That's true. We need to, we need to do some help.
Any other items?
I've been wondering about our our plan is the twenty fifth of this month, twenty four, twenty fourth of this month. I I know one year when when uh when uh Mrs. Mitchell was here, we had to where people who had trucks were moving and and things would call in and they would leave their name. Now so much they do, they just leave, you know, people could call in and find out who they could get to move stuff. The city did not set prices or anything. It was just like he would have a truck and he would call in and said, my truck is available to move things on Saturday. So should someone need it? He set his price so that when the person called in and said, you know, I'm looking for somebody to move some stuff, especially seniors, it helped a lot because they didn't have access to to getting their stuff moved out there. Then you would give them a list. This is a list of people who have called in and said they would be available. They would contact the person then to make arrangements. And I was just thinking that would be something that we could do again this year so that we could help people who didn't have transportation to get their stuff moved out there, be able to contact somebody and and make arrangements for getting their stuff moved out. Something to think about.
So then was this um like companies that were contacted or does?
It was just put in the newspaper that if you would like to be, you know, would like to participate in the city's plan by picking up trash from houses and places, you know. Then in at City Hall, you can pick up a list of the people were calling in and they were just writes down who they were. Donovan Williams has a truck, you know. And so I would, if I didn't have a way of moving my stuff, I can come down here that people who were had signed up to be movers, then I would call that person and and say, I'm looking for someone to come and move my stuff on Saturday out there. And Jill would say, uh, how much do you charge? And I would say, well, I charge fifteen dollars per trip or whatever. But anyway, it it was helpful to people uh in order to to get the stuff moved, but some people are not gonna have transportation. So might be just something to think about that the city could do to help the people get their stuff moved.
Mayor Pro Tim Jackson.
Was that for senior citizens on? Was it for senior citizens only or for anybody? For anybody, senior citizens. So basically the ones that were calling in for to get a a list of people.
Who received the calls? Who took the calls?
They call out here.
So whoever answered them. Whoever answered that.
I guess, I guess the front office was the one. Or you could just walk in and and get the sheet. The sheets were out there. You would just walk in and get the sheet. That like like down there by the door.
Done.
So that you would know the list of people when you could always be available.
All right. Any other items?
I just want to see the city get clean.
How about comment? There's anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and address council? You have opportunity at this time and three minutes is yours.
I'm almost afraid to come up because I heard the conversation before about wanting to make this a quick meeting. So but since it's limited to three minutes, I can't do too much harm. Uh, my name is Virgie Ammerman. I live at three oh five East Main Street. I'm the current resident and CEO of the Albee Economic Development Corporation. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for all the work you're doing, city manager, council people. Um, really appreciate everything that you do for the city. Oh, and I can't forget Jill. So all the work that you do, Jill and Colin. Um, I just wanted to highlight um a couple of agenda items. Um, the Michigan um Homeowners Assistance Fund, which the E D C office is now a resource for is um somewhere that residents can go to get help with utilities and back taxes and mortgage payments, um if they are in a certain income category. So um I would suggest that if it's possible to have to refer people to the E D C, we might be able to help help them out with that. Um, we, I already um am trying to vision away. Um, we, I already um am trying to vision a way to help with back property taxes, I know um uh, the director of finance, David, and I are emailing on that, trying to figure out how to connect those folks in with the EDC before those become delinquent and properties are turned over to the land bank, so trying to find a way to avoid some of that um by using those uh homeowner assistance finance dollars that we get from MISHDA. And um I would not be, um, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you very much for the addition of Scott Coverley to the EDC board. Um, Scott has been a huge help for me already since I've been on the board. Especially, uh, I'm sorry, since I've been in my post, especially since uh of his background in not only education but also industry, so just such a unique um combination has really been beneficial for the workforce development work that he's doing and um youth employment. And also assisting to navigate some of the new opportunities we have coming because of the Blue Oval Plan, so thank you so much for Mr. Coverley, it's quite a gift for us and we look forward to the second and final position being filled as soon as possible, so thank you so much.
Anybody else in the gallery? All right, city managers are cool.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, happy my report was included in the package, just wanna highlight a few things. Um, so the wastewater treatment plant, um you were supposed to approve a recommendation at this meeting, however, it has been pushed back to next meeting. We pushed back the bid opening to Thursday, June first. Um, there are limited contractors who could um have the area of expertise to bid on this project, so project engineer was um a few of those contractors reached out and asked if we could push it back, so we did that. Um, so you will have a recommendation to award that project um at the June nineteenth meeting. Just wanted to give an update on the Albion dams project, um so the final report from the feasibility study, it's not quite finished, we need to, um the M D N R, they're um collecting one final sediment sample and that will complete the report. Um, so then that final report will come and um our project engineer will share that to council and then council will ultimately decide which option we would like to um pursue. So last July, we held that public, that public meeting in Victory Park. Um, and we provided our residents with five possible options based off of the ongoing feasibility study, so there are five um alternatives have been identified, so one is no action. Two is repair or replace the dams. Three is remove all five dams and maintain the existing flow split between the mill race and the natural channel. Four is remove all five dams and modify the flow so the majority of the water flows through the natural channel and widen that natural channel. And five is remove all five dams and modify the flow so the majority of water flows through the natural channel into Victory Park. Um, city administration, we're considering alternatives three and four. However, like I said, it will be up to, up to the city council to decide which route we take. Um, just in working with our project engineers and with the different grant opportunities that have been available, we applied um to Eagle, to the dam risk reduction program to secure funding to help with the design phase, so if you look, majority of the options or alternatives are to remove the dams and return those waterways back to the natural flow, that's what Eagle, that's what the D N R, they're kind of pushing to um, the communities to pursue if you have dams within, within the community, so we we didn't want to miss out on that possible grant opportunity, I'm happy to share that we were um awarded a million dollars through that grant program to help us pay for that design phase. We were also received another hundred and fifty thousand dollars um through the Great Lakes Fishery Trust to cover that to cover that project cost. Um, so stay tuned, I anticipate that final report coming to you at the end of June, early July, they're working to get that final sediment sample collected. Um, but I've had a few residents reach out saying that we've already made a decision and I just wanna put that out there, no, we have not decided. I think we're, we're looking at what um the best options, just in terms of grant funding, um to to keep dams in place and to put the necessary maintenance, it's going to we're talking millions of dollars, and right now the grant programs that are, are out there are, they're pushing to remove remove dams to get them back to their natural waterways. Um, so the city's project plan, you guys all heard um the presentation, I believe, last meeting from Mickey regarding the water um system improvements project, we submitted our application to the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund on June first. So the estimated total project cost is nineteen point two million dollars. And that includes building the second water tower, a lot of water main um replacement, and then improvements to our water treatment plant. Just wanna share, I'll be participating in the fall Michigan Infrastructure Council Asset Management Champion Program. Um, it is the program will run through August through November and it requires approximately twenty-five hours, so this will just help me enhance my knowledge and skills um to effectively uh properly manage asset management um within our community, so I'm looking forward to participating in that. Street sweeping, so we um will begin street sweeping tomorrow, included in the packet is the schedule, it has been added to the city's website as well as the Facebook page, and a lot of residents have already commented that they're very happy and look forward to that happening. Um, it looks like it'll take roughly three weeks to complete, hopefully if no mechanical issues, so stay tuned for that. So I want to remind everybody, the farmer's market is up and running, it happens every Wednesday from four to seven. And then um our summer hours, they began last week, so City Hall, we're open Monday through Thursday from seven AM to five PM and eight to noon on Fridays. So just please remind everybody, and this will run through Labor Day. And as council member Reed mentioned, we have the um citywide cleanup event coming on Saturday, June twenty-fourth from eight AM to one PM at Ketchum and Harris Field. Oh, I do one other update, because council member Williams asked about it, so yes, we submitted a letter of support, so neighborhoods they applied um through, applied for the NEP grant funding through MISHDA on the city of Albion um to use in the city of Albion, they were awarded that grant. They received funding to assist about four and a half houses, so in census tracts thirty-three and thirty-six, so the max funding level is ten thousand dollars, so they've already received quite a few calls regarding this program and they have applications in process with three households. Um, they have not received or heard back from the other grant application they put in through MISHDA for the um investing in community housing grant. But that's another grant opportunity to help our residents improve, improve their homes, so I will keep you um update you once I hear back.
Two questions, uh first where are those census tracts? I doubt if our citizens know what census tract they're in, are we talking about the west, northwest and
Yes.
east or?
No, the northwest, so I believe um in like precinct one here, but I will confirm with you and
You said two census tracts.
Thirty-six is one and two.
Thirty-three and thirty.
I mean, one and
And it's the east.
State, state, one and five.
But we only had four census tracts in our city, so I know that one of them is in the northwest, so is there another one in the southwest?
Yeah, it, I, I think it expand, it'll be precincts one and five and then two and three. Cause it's thirty-three and thirty-six, right?
Yeah, seventy-three and thirty.
Yeah, so I believe it's
Actually precinct five isn't a part of thirty-three and thirty-six right now. But I was just wondering, do you think other monies will be available for the other census tracts? Um
That I can't say.
Here are something that we can address.
For a future round, but right now I think there, because there are requirements for this NEP program.
Um, yeah.
Yep, so I can follow up with, yeah, Neighborhood Seem to see.
I'm excited, so, second question, so you mentioned that the farmer's market is not on Wednesday, we no longer have a Saturday farmer's market, is that correct?
We do not, so the DDA, they decided to move away from that to not compete with surrounding communities that have larger Saturday markets to really help draw towards our Wednesday market and then be able to support other markets.
So those in the markets would be where? Marshall and where else?
Really, the city of Marshall, that's the biggest one, that's our neighboring community.
Okay. Thank you.
Council member comments?
I would just like to make a comment to say thank you for the council members that were present at the first graduation in Albion that we've had. Uh, it was a fifth grade graduation, oh, it's in a senior high graduation, but um the students were very pleased, they were very proud that they had on their caps and gowns. I apologize, I didn't recognize, I saw you and then I was trying to move on to something else, but thank you, Mayor, and thank Chief Kip, or I saw the two of you, if others were there, I apologize, but I think it was very well attended and this is something that we plan to continue to do.
It was pretty cute, to see the fifth graders in their red cap and gown, I mean it reminded me of my high school graduation.
I know. You probably didn't go to Goodrich Chapel, but, so we were very upscale.
But it was fun to see the parents who were there, they brought flowers, they brought little
You would think it was a twelve.
Has the Albion Alumni Association grown tough with you? Cause I think this is the way to grow the Albion Alumni Association, cause these are alumni of Albion School.
And this is, but we, we marketed it as the class of twenty thirty.
Yeah.
So with the aspirations that we will, you know, support these students uh in the class of twenty thirty, and we will be there to watch them walk across that stage as well. So there are a lot of underlying uh reasons, you know, in terms of holding it and expectations and responsibilities of ourselves as well as the students.
The council member comment? So I, I guess a lot, to piggyback on that, you know, I just wanted to say congratulations to our local seniors that have graduated or will be graduating and others in several commencement ceremonies already been held. Um, I've seen a lot of pictures, but kind of keep it in mind with this graduating class, when they were freshmen, that's when COVID hit. And truly, they've overcome a lot of obstacles to get to their commencement day. So I just wanted to say congratulations to all of our graduating seniors for persevering, for not giving up. And to the families that pushed them a long way, because I know how difficult that timeframe was working in higher education. And for those of you that have a public school experience, you know, like Mayor Tim Jackson, at, at Charter, that, that was a lot. Um, and it's just amazing to think that it's already been four years and these, these students stuck with it to graduate. Um this Saturday, um there is a father-son hookout that's gonna be held at Victory Park. Um, local resident Gregory Gant again is organizing this event. He has said in the past, it's not necessarily for fathers and sons, um but just a community event to come together. It starts at ten AM, Victory Park, so if you're here in town you wanna get the kids out, there's a lot of fun stuff to do. I know there's a lot of great food that they offer, so head down to Victory Park to participate. Um one other thing that I just kinda wanted to make you all aware of. I'm sure that many of you probably remember a few years ago the college was working on appropriation funds for Washington Gardner. When Washington Gardner was intended to be a, a hub for community center or um a museum, uh for youth activity. So the college had submitted language to both Senator Meyer's office and Senator Stabano's office. They had combined the request to one through Stabano's office um in a total of two point eight million dollars. Since then, as we know, or some may know, Washington Gardner is a bigger challenge than what they had anticipated. So even with the funds that they would have received, it wouldn't have been enough to make Washington Gardner operational. And with federal funds, you can only draw down money on things that are in writing. Um, so kind of going back and forth and trying to work through the language, you know, the YMCA was also a recipient. Uh, the Nicola Matt was also a recipient. So the college came to the conclusion that it would be best for themselves to remove the college as part of the process. And working with city manager and myself, the college resubmitted language that would then put the city of Albion as the fiduciary agent and moving the money to the Opportunity High School. Or the YMCA can still continue doing programming. Or they can also build other, you know, programming like having the rate start readiness program um and other things that can help serve our youth and children in the community, so it hasn't been approved yet. Um, once it does become approved, then we will bring that to council for approval like we did before. Um, but just kind of know that the college has removed themselves. The city will be the fiduciary agent. We will work with the YMCA, we will work with Marshall Public Schools um to hopefully still have that museum to still be able to showcase all of the awards and artifacts that former Wildcats earned. Um, so that is something that we are moving towards. Just to keep the programming in, how with the transition and the president's office, they did not want to say no to twenty million dollars coming into the city about being to go towards the youth. Um, so that's why they kind of look to how we keep those funds here and make this uh possibility, so that's how they came to the conclusion to have the city be the recipient of those funds and then they'll still move through the better than YMCA and now Marshall Opportunities, um Marshall Public Schools. We actually have here and to buy programming to be prepared.
Yeah, of course, that's music to my ears, because we've been trying to get the uh Albion Public School history room there for many, many years now, so I met last year, but I didn't know what the status is, but that is music, so it seems like it's a reality.
And there, there was a lot of hard work put into the committee meeting, we're getting, coming up with the idea being able to showcase that, so it's like you were saying, it's great news for folks that have put a lot of time and effort into coming up with that, that it could still come to fruition. So like I said, it's not a done deal, but that's the change. That's my free hand.
No, no, you don't have the answer to my questions.
Uh, another thing is that we do have June two coming up. Um, that'll be um the seventeenth, we will again start here at City Hall at eleven AM. Move to Holland Park where the rest of the festivities festivities will be held. Um, again, Councilwoman Reed has worked very hard uh along with her committee to pull this together, again, another community event. Um, it's always a spectacular event, given that the weather holds up for us. Um, but we have PJ, we have food, we have games, we have community partners that are there for services. Um, so Councilwoman Reed, I don't know if you had any other posters, like if anybody wanted to put these up somewhere that could be visible.
Yeah, and we also have healthcare providers to come and do well well body checks as well as vaccines, hopefully we will have the the fifth vaccine or the vaccines for COVID, as well as we're working on immunization, but we will, if it's not there, it's going to be at Harrington for the back to school, so we will have healthcare providers, a lot of about twelve of them, so, so.
So I'm sure that we agree with it. Any other council member comments? I have a motion to adjourn.
No, yeah, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Support. Um, favor say aye.
Aye.
Three, pose. Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Support.
So, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed. We being adjourned eight oh four PM, I think you